Play to the music teachers.
Yeah, we're going live.
Still not sure. Pretty sure it's.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to tonight's budget hearing and committee of the whole meeting. First up tonight is our public school budget hearing special meeting. Like to call that meeting to order at this time. We have met compliance with official notification. Roll call, please.
Nick Schumacher is here. Sarah Schubert McCone.
Here.
Gallagher.
Here.
Nicholson.
Here.
Orgiowski.
Here.
Brooke Taylor.
Here.
Good Steve Olson.
Here.
Our first action item tonight. Consideration of the 2024-2025 School District Budget Resolutions. And what I'll do is I'll keep them in order as they are listed. And we'll have separate discussions on each one. I know that Mr. C, if I start to get off or on anything, well, we'll finish out with this, so. Oh, I'm sorry. Missed that. Is there anybody on the convention?
Just looks, no.
Thank you.
So are we gonna have Dave present before you do the resolutions, or how's that?
I think that's what we did last year.
Okay, I just wanted to check.
Thank you.
See, do you have? Okay.
All right, this is my kind of shine once coming up, so. Uh, first, I just want to say thank you to the staff, admin, Amy, and the board. You guys have been there to help me provide, help provide direction on where I need to go, providing support. So I really do appreciate it. I want to start with that. I've felt supported through the whole situations. Um, first, I just want to start off with a quick overview of the budget process itself. Creating the budget process, put a year, but it's actually 16 months is about how much time I take when I'm spending working on a budget. So we're presenting a board 25 tonight. I've already been working on 25, 26, and then even looking farther into the future on that side. But um, over that time, we held multiple meetings. I meet with our admin team. Out at the schools and each of the departments say, hey, do you guys see any big expenses coming your way? You gotta tell me now so I can figure it out, get that worked into the budget. Um, then sitting down with um, the staff, we had listening sessions. We want to get there. Hey, what, what are you guys looking for? What are you prioritizing? I know about a year or so ago, we sent that survey to the employees and say, hey, what, what do we need to prioritize within our budget? And that start, that gives us a baseline, gives us direction. And then, of course, it's meeting with the board. Sure, you guys are sick of hearing it hot. We had multiple meetings. Even, even in the board meeting, or if we have a one-on-one sessions, or if somebody stopped by, Nick, you know, sat on the office so we could discuss finances and budgets. So working with you guys to figure out what direction do I need to go? Because if I'm looking, if I'm not going in the way the board wants us to go, then that's a failure on my side, so. Um, and then the other part of it, I don't do this alone as far as business managers. There's a lot riding on this. I mean, you know, this is a $24 million tax levy that's going out. So I reached out to numerous other business managers, some that have been only here for a couple of years, and others that have been doing this for 30 years. I showed them my revenue limit sheet. I say, hey, this is my strategy. Am I looking good? And then also contract on, have consultants down south with Eric to say, hey, what are my numbers? How's my model look? How's everything going? Board, do these all look solid? Because I want to make sure that I'm providing the right numbers, so. So key aspects of the 2425 budget. This is a unique year. Usually I'd come up here, present one budget, say, hey, this is what we have. Um, and then it get approved. The next day I'd go and I'd file this with the state. Let the municipalities know. I mail this stuff out. Of course, you're not going to do that this year. This year because of state statute. State statute requires that the board needs to approve a budget by October 31st. But the vote is on November 5th. So what has to happen is two budgets and two tax levies need to be approved by the board. And then depending upon what happens with the referendum, that's the budget and levy that gets filed with the state of Wisconsin. And then um, sent out to the municipalities. I need to have it in the municipality's hands by November 8th. The standard procedure in the past has always been, I send a certified mail out, you know, a week ahead of time, I get confirmation. So I will be driving to all these municipalities at the end of next week to say, here's your levy now, so to make sure they have it in my hand. Um, when you look at this, and I'll get more in depth later, the difference in the levy, if the referendum passes or if the referendum fails, is at $146,000. Or $146,003. I'll get more into the why that's there. An increase in the revenue per member on the revenue limit was pushed. This is the smoke and mirrors thing that even is pushed through that we're going to get this for the next 400 years. It will change in the next millennium. That's 325, equates to about $730,000. Which, when you look at the grand scheme of things, is less than 2%. When we've had inflation of 4, 8, and 4%, so it's not even coming close to what we have up there. There was a decrease of $2.93 million in equalization aid. That number's going to be huge. Um, I'll get into the weeds a little bit more of that later on. And then there was no increase in the per pupil categorically, as hasn't happened for the last few years. I love it when they put it in the per pupil categorically. Right now, I think it's 725. Um, when they give you that money, there's no strings attached to that. They are giving, the state is giving you this amount of money. Whereas when they give you this $700,000 like I'm talking about, they're actually making the taxpayers pay for it, so. Again, no increase on that side. That's where I hope there's an eventual increase. So why two budgets? What's different? As I said, state statute says we have to do this by October 31st. I've heard funny stories of a board actually waiting till October 31st and Batman approving the budget that day. So I appreciate the fact that we don't do it on October 31st.
Hey, Star Trek is here.
Down the road, though, maybe I get nervous because it's like, what if we have the monster blizzard around for two days? I might not even push it forward. The reason we do delay this far, though, is I don't have any of my numbers until October 15th, not the ones that count. Our equalization aid is the big number that comes out on October 15th, voucher stuff like that. I can't tell you what the levy's going to be until that, so. And then if the referendum passes, the, that is going to provide an additional $2.5 million to the Fund 10 budget. So what if the referendum fails? If the referendum fails, one, we will still be okay. This year we will be fine. It's going forward, future years that we're going to have an issue. Right now, Superior has a strategy of normalizing our mill rate. And maximizing our savings on interest expense. And with doing that, last year, we saved nearly $1 million on our interest expense. But going forward, um, when I get into what happens if it passes, I'll discuss it. This is a high-level um, sheet breakdown of the budget. In you guys' budget books, it gives you a more detail so you can see what it actually is. This is broken down by sources, so you're local on the revenue side. From the state, federal, things like that. And then it's a breakdown of expenses on the functions. So um, the big number you need to look at right there is the $57,311,580. We're projecting a balanced budget this year, and that's what it's going to be. That's what our revenue and expenses are scheduled. So this is if the referendum passes. The number you're going to see different is the amount of revenue and expenses increases by $2.5 million. The exact amount with the referendum, this will be $59,811,580. I'll get into how those funds are different. So the first thing people are going to ask is, all right, well, what is happening with that other $2.5 million? The funds that we would get in for, and this is just this year, because following the next few years, it's going to be available for much other thing. All the inflation increases, which is going to be in the salary, utilities, things like that. This money this year is going to provide the ability to, to, to work on the deferred maintenance that we've been kicking the can. When it comes down to it, if you're running low on money, what is the first thing that you're going to avoid? Is, don't, don't do the tough point project out of four corners. Tough point is, Nick, you probably know way more than I would. It's something to do with the bricks and the water gets inside. All I know is that you need tough point whenever you see the white lines going down, you build it. What happens is water's getting in, it's causing damage. The more you ignore it, the more damage it causes. So at Four Corners alone, it looks like it's like a $600,000 is the estimate we got, just to get that. Of course, we're not going to invest that last year because we don't know what's going on yet. Great Lakes and Bryant both need tough point projects done. It's $195,000 was the estimate they gave us back in December. The estimate the body gave me is that's going to increase between 10 and 20% every single year because it's just going to keep popping up. The other part of it is roughs. You guys know, I tell you all the time about Northern Lights and the middle school needing new roofs. The other roofs, we have to make sure we maintain. We do the proper patch jobs and stuff, and that stuff gets really expensive. So that's going to make it a problem. The other part of it is an OPEV contribution. OPEV stands for Other Post-Employment Benefits. Again, this is another one where we don't either pay this right now, but if you don't pay it now, it's going to keep growing and growing and growing, growing. We've kicked the can on our OPEV contributions. There's a slide in here that I'm required to show every year that'll go over a little bit. But what it is, is we have some of the most senior teachers in the state. Over 50% of our staff, our teaching staff, is at Step 13 or, and that means they've been teaching for a minimum of 13 years. Of course, you get to retire at the age of 55. Those that were grandfathered in have a different type of employee benefit that comes through that's extremely expensive to the district, and you have to pay that out. Um, we have to, we put funds aside every year. We should be putting funds aside every year. Make sure we offset that. But the bill's going to get due pretty quick, and that's where it's going to be really hard. That we really need the contributions that are in there today that pay for future expenses, otherwise it's going to get really difficult. So when we talk about fund balance, um, we have been providing or putting money into our fund balance every single year. We've seen what's happening in the future, and we've been saving to, to navigate those courses. I would anticipate that this would probably be the final year that we contribute to fund balance. Because I don't see how, under the current model, unless something's changing with the state, how will we have any extra money aside to do that? It's a good thing and a bad thing. It's a good thing if you know you're always going to have that revenue. It's a bad thing if you don't know if you're going to have enough money going forward. It's a, it's a trick or a game that the state plays where, hey, you didn't spend as much money, we're not going to give you as much money in aid. All of a sudden, our taxes go up because it gets less equalization. That's part of the reason our equalization is down so much, sure, is our expenses come down. They said, oh, you guys don't need as much money. And now we turn around to the taxpayers and say, the state says you guys are richer, you gotta be this way. School Finance 101, it's how many kids you have, and how much does the state give you per kid? So on the enrollment side, our district enrollment for our revenue sheet is down on 123 students. They call them FTEs. Reason it's FTEs is, for example, a pre-K student is worth .6. They're not worth a full student. You only get a .6 for them. And that calculation is done over a rolling three-year average. That's supposed to help you so you don't see a sudden drop in enrollment, causes a sudden drop in revenue. Um, unfortunately, we're rolling into there where we consistently have been a sudden drop. Uh, the big thing that makes me nervous is our 11th grade class is 368, I believe, and they're probably going to be replaced by 240K graduates. So this, it's going to be an ongoing story.
Which contributes to our long-range projections.
And that's when you guys see the red on our long-range projections, that's taken into consideration, so on those projections. Um, I've been told to not be such a pessimist all the time, so the shining light is we did have an increase on our kindergarten from this year compared to last year, so those were three extras. Just remember that.
I'm a pessimist too, so you're okay.
Just say you're a leader. That's what I say.
Open enrollment has stayed relatively flat. That's another question I was getting. Hey, we just keep leaning on all these students to other school. We're not. Of course, we, we lose more than we get in, but that's because we are significantly bigger than A doors. I tell people, I just wish we could take people from different groups. We would be able to bring more. That would be the big, big district we take from, so. This is put breakdown in enrollment. Like I said, if you guys remember, uh, the third Friday count, oxen receipts, as people call it, 3,897. But our number we get to use is at 41, 4,130. That's because of the three-year enrollment. Fund balance, I know this is a broken record. All of you heard the fund balance. Fund balance is like the equivalent for the network, for the Superior School District. The accounting term, so I can use my accounting degree, is it's an unassigned fund balance, that is the residual classification for the general fund up. So what that means is that is only the money that you fund ten, that when our expenses were less than our revenue, we could contribute that into our fund balance money. Which, the other analogy I give, if you have a $100,000 home, you've paid off $50,000 of it, your fund balance is $50,000. That doesn't mean you have $50,000 in the bank. That just means that's your network or your fund balances. General rule of thumb is our fund balance should be between 25 and 33%. Currently, we're going to be at about 28%, and as you can see, we're seeing the percentage increase and the fund increase. The big thing, I want you guys to remember when I'm up here next year, and I'm talking about how fund balance in the future could go down. But we're running a balanced budget is because our expenses are going to go up, but if I'm not contributing to that savings account, the percentage of your expenses is skewed out. So um, that 28 is, that is a solid number. That shows that we're physically responsible, healthy as a school district. There's a lot of districts that would be jealous of that. And this is just for those that are visual, showing the bars get longer and longer and longer. Maybe not getting longer. I don't want to exceed the 32% for sure, but I want to maintain. This is the Fund 73 OPEV Trust that I found out last year is required to be presented to the board. Again, OPEV stands for Other Post-Employment Benefits. This kind of goes over that our beginning fund balance, the expenditures, as you can see, um, in 22, we had a drop. We spent more than we, than we've set aside, because they're low on cash. Next year, we made an extra contribution. I made that extra contribution so that it will affect our equalization aid. Next year, uh, this school year, we're looking at, you know, pretty close to even. What I'd really like is to get that number up. Because that number, that, that liability we have tied to is increasing every single year as more and more teachers get to the retirement phase. Um, but if you look out, I think it was 28, 20, 35, 36, all of a sudden, those will start falling off. And then we're going in the other version, which is going to be really nice for us, so. This is the Revenue Limit worksheet. Uh, and as they say, this is the sheet that gets business managers better. You better have this one right. This is the one that I have in front of multiple people to tell me if it's right. The big thing is, you would think school finance is easy. How many students you got? How much they worth? Multiple, bam, there's your number. You enter in your number over there, you see the 4130, you will see 11, 325 or 327 in a corner somewhere. The number you want to look at is down towards the bottom. 24,996,501 dollars is the total tax levy, and then the number below that is the levy rate. But most people are more familiar with the mill rate. So on this one, it says .00684. That means it is a $6.84 mill rate. That means for every $1,000, 684. If you have a $100,000 home, then you're paying $684 on taxes, property taxes from school, Superior schools.
Am I correct that our mill rate is still below the state average?
770 was the last that I have of state average, significantly low. It's, so our mill rate, if this levy passes, is $6.84. Oh, actually, I gotta save the good part for the, sorry. This is the breakdown of the revenue by Fund 10, by referendum result. So you can see, if it passes, 63% of the money is coming from the state. If it doesn't pass, 66% of the money is coming from the state. The reason those numbers differ is because um, this, the community will be providing more money if the referendum passes. If it fails, then they're contributing less. So that's why that number moves like that. The state hasn't given us an extra penny, so. And this is a breakdown of expenses. One thing I want to point out is, I know I always tell you guys, our salary and benefits are between the 75, 80% range. And then somebody looks at this and goes, wait a minute, 47 plus 18 equals 58 or 65%. That isn't 75, 80. The part is that 15% you see up there, which is a transfer to other funds. That's the $6.5 million that we're transferring over to the Fed, Fund 27. And of course, even more than 80% of that is lined up in salary and benefits. So when you pull those numbers over, you add in that 15% of that 65 out there. That's where you get 75 to 80%. Then you see the shift, of course, though, um, you know, depending on that $2.5 million, something gets moved around between benefits and benefits. Mill rate and tax implications. Um, so if the mill rate, the mill rate, if the referendum passes, it'd be $6.84. If it fails, it's going to be $6.80. That equals $4 per $100,000. Your home was worth, in essence, a referendum cost $4 per $100,000. You, since, you know, the spring, when we made our estimates of what is this referendum going to cost people? The $7 per $100,000 is the number that we have gone out with. And those were the numbers based on the best we had at that point in time. It is now, it's gone down, and that's because of some, some of the numbers that we got in from the state on October 15th and some other information they provided, like uh, private property tax and things like that. Where looking at it, we can pull it down, and this is what the, this is what the mill rate is. So I didn't want to tell that to people out there because then it would just cause confusion. But in actuality, if you have a $200,000 other home, the referendum is going to cost you eight extra additional dollars on your home because of the referendum. The, I think that's a key that people need to, need to understand and see. That, that is the number, we're unique in the situation that we can actually tell you. Uh, a majority of those going out for referendum are actually doing it for next year. We're doing it for this year. When they do it for next year, they're just giving you estimates, and those estimates are going to be wild. We can tell people before they even go to the ballot box, say, how much is this going to cost me? It's going to cost this. I cannot submit any levy or budget that is different from what's to now. So this is, this is in stone now, so. So the key aspects of the tax levy passes, the estimated mill rate will be $6.84, which is 60 cents more than it was last year, which was 624. We saw an increase in property value for the city, for the property of Superior of 6.6% compared to 17.7% last year. If somebody would have told me, you know, the business managers a few years ago, you're going to see 6.6% increase, they would go nuts. That's called hyperinflation on the property value, much less a 17%. We're hoping, I'm really hoping we just get back to 1, 2%, and that's kind of standard trust for. The overall levy is going to be $24.9 million. That's an increase of $3.61 million. Um, and that is, can be attributed 100% to the fact that the state said, we're going to give you $2.93 million less dollars. And have you get an additional 763,000. So 2.9 plus 700,000, there's your $3.6 million. Uh, if the referendum fails, again, the mill rate goes down slightly to 680. That's 56 cents more than last year. Property values are, stay the same. Overall levy goes down to $24.8 million. That's where you see that $146,000 difference. And then again, state equalization aid, all that, the increase in the revenue side, all stays the same as if the referendum passes. So conclusion, the budgets that I presented out here, they're grounded in the priorities that the staff, community, and the board have expressed. Um, due to the referendum, we have two budget levies, or two budgets and two tax levies that need to be approved tonight. Once the results of the referendum are confirmed, the legislative levy will be submitted to the state. Overall, the expenses for the state districts have actually decreased. The tax mill rate will either be $6.30 or $6.40. The tax level will either be 24.8 million or 24.9 million. And the tax levies will be certified and mailed by November 8th. Say, because technically it's supposed to be November 10th, but that's a Sunday, so of course they didn't give us the upload. Um, you guys should, you have, you know, more in depth in your budget booklets. Any questions?
Very fast presentation.
Excellent. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
It's been a lot of work.
I could say double the work.
Double the work, yes.
Very, very thorough.
And the, and the booklets that you presented, both sides. Thank you for doing that, you know, the amount of time that it takes David for you to do this. We appreciate this very, very much. Well, consideration then of the 2024-25 School District Budget Resolutions. Reminder, this is operational Fund 10. David needs to submit both passed or failed resolutions. And then a decision will be made after the referendum on Tuesday. So the first action item, School District of Superior Tax Levy Certification. The administration recommends approval of Resolution 2410. School District of Superior Tax Levy Certification Based Upon the Referendum Passing. And there is an attachment on that.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve Resolution 2410, discussion. I'd like to point out on the attachments that Casey has thrown out here and everything. What's nice is we also got to see the breakdown of the percentage from City Superior, Town of Oakland, Parkland Summit Superior, County Superior, Village of Oliver, and Village of Superior. In each one of the sections where it's broken out, it aligns with that, so that, that was very helpful when, when David and I met and went through all of this. The numbers are there, exactly what he presented to us. I guess that's, that's my two cents on it right now, but. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. So the Resolution 2410, be it further resolved by the Board of Education of the School District of Superior, that the school clerk shall ascertain the total of taxes levied for school purposes, and shall apportion the levy to the governing bodies within the School District of Superior. Be it further resolved that the Board of Education of the School District of Superior certify to the clerk of the City of Superior, the clerk of the Town of Oakland, the clerk of the Town of Parkland, the clerk of the Town of Summit, the clerk of the Town of Superior, the clerk of the Village of Oliver, and the clerk of the Village of Superior, their portion or share of the said taxes, and these be entered on the tax roll of each municipal unit. Approved by the Board of Education of the School District Superior this 30th day of October 2024. Next up is the 2024-25 Budget for the School District of Superior. The administration recommends the approval, excuse me, of Resolution 2411. The 2024-25 Budget for the School District of Superior Based Upon the Referendum Passing.
Motion to approve.
Motion in a second to approve Resolution 2411 Upon Referendum Passing, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. This one's a little longer, so hang in there. Be it resolved that the general fund, including state and federal grants of the 2425 Budget of School District of Superior, County of Douglas, State of Wisconsin, is established in the anticipated sums of $59,811,580 for revenues and $59,811,580 for expenditures. Be it further resolved that such expenditures be as set forth in the Expenditure Budget Booklet dated October 30, 2024, of the School District of Superior's 2024-2025 Budget Information Booklet, which pages are incorporated herein by reference. Be it further resolved that the prior service liability of the 2425 Budget of the School District of Superior, County of Douglas, State of Wisconsin, is established in the sums of $680,918 for revenues and $680,918 for expenditures. Be it further resolved that the debt service fund of the 2425 Budget of the School District of Superior, County of Douglas, State of Wisconsin, is established in the sums of $6,491, excuse me, $6,491,163 for revenues, and $6,491,163 for expenditures. Be it further resolved that the Community Education Fund of the 2024-25 Budget of the School District of Superior, County of Douglas, State of Wisconsin, is established in the sums of $150,000 for revenue and $150,000 for expenditures. Be it further resolved that the Food Service Fund of the 2425 Budget of the School District of Superior, County of Douglas, State of Wisconsin, is established in the anticipated sums of $3,247,727 for revenues and $3,247,727 for expenditures. Be it further resolved that the 2425 Budget, as approved, be distributed to the proper official of the towns, villages, and city comprising the School District of Superior, approved by the Board of Education, School District Superior, this 30th day of October 2024.
Nice job, Steve.
There's more. The next Resolution 2412, School District of Superior Tax Levy Certification. The administration recommends approval of Resolution 2412, School District of Superior Tax Levy Certification Based Upon the Referendum Failing.
Motion to approve.
Aye. Motion in a second. Aye. Motion the second to approve resolution twenty-four twelve. Are any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Resolution twenty-four twelve, be it further resolved by the Board of Education of the School District of Superior, that the school clerk shall ascertain the total of taxes levied for school purposes and shall apportion the levy to the governing bodies within the School District of Superior. Be it further resolved that the Board of Education of the School District of Superior certify to the clerk of the city of Superior, the clerk of the town of Oakland, the clerk of the town of Parkland, the clerk of the town of Summit, the clerk of the town of Superior, the clerk of the village of Oliver and the clerk of the village of Superior, their portion or share of the said taxes and these be entered on the tax roll of each municipal unit. Approved by the Board of Education of the School District of Superior this thirtieth day of October twenty twenty-four. The last resolution twenty twenty-four, twenty-five budget for the School District of Superior, the administration recommends the approval of resolution twenty-four thirteen. The twenty twenty-four, twenty-five budget for the School District of Superior based upon the referendum failing.
Motion approved.
Second. Motion the second to approve resolution twenty-four thirteen. Any further discussion?
I just had some questions. The, there were some expenses that were less in this budget. Was there like, was that guesses? Was uh, you were line iteming some things?
Yeah, so that's the, the items in the, as I said, we would put money towards, uh, we put, we put money towards uh building projects. Um, and so on, so there's I've been looking at possibly doing some prepayments on some items, so by paying off this year, I've got to pay it off. Should we, which saves this year? So. Your laptop's in there. School, we have one, eight, good schools.
Okay. So that's like the, there's like seven hundred and eighty-four thousand in benefits, that's less.
Yep, that's all that.
Okay. And what's the purchase services?
That would be gift, um, one would be if we're doing any purchasing or contracting out to do work on the schools.
Sure.
And then also the computers and possibly and that's, but that ones, like this budget is an estimate of what we're gonna do. If, if I get to the end of the year and also there's some unexpected expenses, then we're gonna have to, you know, or if we uh, turn more revenue, then we just figure less expenses that I have to be up there that money to maximize that need that we're gonna do, so.
Yeah, I was just curious if you were dialing in or making general assumptions.
Sure, I appreciate your questions.
Any further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Resolution twenty-four thirteen, be it resolved that the general fund, including state and federal grants of the twenty-four, twenty-five budget of the School District of Superior, County of Douglas, State of Wisconsin, is established in the anticipated sums of fifty-seven million, three hundred eleven thousand, five hundred eighty dollars for revenues and fifty-seven million, three hundred eleven thousand, five hundred eighty for expenditures. Be it further resolved that such expenditure be as set forth in the expenditure book, budget booklet dated October thirty, twenty twenty-four of the School District of Superior's twenty-four, twenty-five budget information booklet, which pages are incorporated herein by reference. Be it further resolved that the prior service liability of the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget of the School District of Superior, County of Douglas, State of Wisconsin is established in the sums of six hundred and eighty thousand, nine hundred and eighteen dollars for revenues and six hundred and eighty thousand, nine hundred and eighteen dollars for expenditures. Be it further resolved that the debt service fund of the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget of the School District of Superior, County of Douglas, State of Wisconsin is established in the sums of eight million, eight hundred and forty-five thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars for revenues and eight million, eight hundred and forty-five doll- thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars for expenditures. Be it further resolved that the Community Education Fund of the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget of the School District of Superior, County of Douglas, State of Wisconsin is established in the sums of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars for revenues and one hundred and fifty doll- thousand dollars for expenditures. Be it further resolved that the Food Service Fund of the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget of the School District of Superior, County of Douglas, State of Wisconsin is established in the anticipated sums of three million, two hundred forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars for revenues and three million, two hundred forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars for expenditures. Be it further resolved that the twenty-four, twenty-five budget as approved be distributed to the proper officials of the towns, villages and city comprising the School District of Superior, approved by the Board of Education of the School District of Superior this thirtieth day of October twenty twenty-four. Yeah, I'm glad I don't have to speak much more today. It was quite the next week. Thanks. All right, thanks. All right. At this time, we would like to move to our committee of the whole agenda. Action taken at today's meeting is is to forward the recommendation for final approval at the next regular school board meeting on Monday, November fourth, two thousand twenty-four. I will call this meeting to order at this time. We have met compliance with official notification, roll call please.
Nick Schumacher here, Sarah Schuber Mccone.
Here.
Ed Gallagher.
Here.
Colson.
Here.
Lord Gavsky.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
President Steve Olson.
Here. First comments by members of the public? No. Next, our report from our superintendent.
All right, I have one action item. Uh, this is um, approval of our final phase of the strategic planning process. Uh, we have up here the work that we did at our last meeting a few weeks ago. Um, these are the strategic objectives that align to the work that we did in phase one. And so bringing this forward, the recommendation for approval, Kate, do you have any, is Kate here?
Should we, should we move to? Yeah.
Okay.
Motion for.
Motion to approve.
Aye. Motion the second. Get back to my agenda.
Once again, I, it's not, thank everyone for the work. Uh, the work that we did on the last day, uh, the planning committee worked to create uh these objectives that kind of get at the specificity of now what we're going to do and measure as a result of the pillars of our strategic plan. So uh the work has ca- we captured those uh objectives here and then the work will continue to create um, metrics that we will measure for district-wide measurement um, on a scorecard, which will be helpful as I share and present ongoing uh data points to you and to the community. So that work will continue, but this is the next step prior to creating those metrics.
So we're planning our next steps is to meet with Joe and to talk through some of those data points that were suggested so that starting next school year, we can have a plan for our report back to you on progress and the strategies that we're doing to um, meet those goals and then that will directly align to our work with our school improvement plans. Um, that was one of the reasons we wanted to do this work this winter is so that we can then take the next six months to realign our, our school improvement plans for next school year. So that is aligned to that work starting in the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
And that work based on
Yep.
mission vision objectives and then schools will, they're continuous. I think it will be a nice, every year we're updating, but this is a really nice chance to be streamlined from the district to
Is it, is it safe to say, I mean, our principals always come forward and talk through their school improvement plan goals, their strategies and their work. I think what will look different this time around, well, you will now get an additional report from probably Kate and I that will provide you some progress on these in addition to the work that's happening at the building level. So that'll happen and we'll work through how often that'll happen and we'll bring that forward this spring.
So we're working with Joe's working with us. Is there like a set number of meetings he's working with you or a time period or cadence or what does that look like?
Um.
We have uh the work, this is my contract that we have with him. The work is to structure the scorecard and um, our CPR card as he referred to it as um, checks along the way. So there weren't a set number of meetings where um, like to complete that.
All right, it's less about the number of meetings, more about the work.
Yeah, to make sure he's supporting us to have that. Um, and then I anticipate sharing that with you as a, just an update. It often with metrics and measurements, uh, the hard part is narrowing the focus to like what are the big measurements that we want to look at because it gets really specific really fast.
So I imagine us bringing that to you after the holidays, probably January, February to get your feedback before we finalize anything.
He's also as part of the work, working with the graphic designer to kind of create the
The booklet, yeah.
Overview of our mission vision. Um, I just shared with him all of our district logo, colors, um, and information and then about thirty great photos for them to choose from, uh, to give us a draft. So we'll we'll have some feedback before that gets published as well.
I'm excited about the work. I know, it's kind of nerdy, but I'm excited about the work. So I'm in this job, I guess.
Yeah, a big thank you to Kate, just for putting it on the venue. The food is great, chips. Well, saying obviously, um.
Something about chips, isn't it?
Yeah. But the booklet, everything, I mean, you, you sent the cards after the first one that was really thoughtful. So thank you very much for all of that. So.
I was just excited by everybody's commitment to be there for three, two and a half days, one of them being me too. So thank you. And to all the rest of our members who joined, it was a big time commitment, but it was impressive work and it was really thoughtful and we were really engaged. It was impressive.
The openness, the, the sharing, you know, people stepping out of their comfort zone. The conversations that we had just fantastic.
Meaningful, yeah, yeah. That's the way it should be.
Yep. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
All right, I, one more item is informational. We're doing something unique this year and I just thought it'd be uh, worth sharing with our board. Uh, we started what we call an aspiring leadership academy. Um, you know, over the years, we have hired for a variety of different leadership positions, either directors or principals, assistant principals, deans, instructional coaches and I think it's safe to say over the years that pool is shrinking every year and the amount of people that we that are interested in those positions is a little bit less. And so um, we know that we have an amazing uh, group of educators within this district. And so we wanted to kind of shoulder tap some people and get some people interested in um, building some leadership capacity within all of our schools. And so we put out an invitation to all staff and just said, is there anybody interested in, down the road, thinking about an instructional coach position or a dean or a assistant principal, the principals, directors, any of those types of positions? And we had about, we had about twenty-two people inquire and nineteen have confirmed. And so we had our first meeting this week and it was pretty great. I already got one thank you message from one teacher saying, you know, this is why she appreciates working in this district, just because we provide opportunities like this for helping them grow professionally. And so um, we did it in the morning. Uh, we took a half a day and we paid for their subs using some of our title funds um, to be able to do that. And so um, if nothing else, we're building leadership capacity across more people and not everybody necessarily is interested in like enrolling in a principal program or, or an admin program, but it gets them thinking. We asked, they asked really good questions. Um, Crystal, uh, Kate, Molly, Erin Lebers, um, we're all kind of leading that charge and trying to give them some time just to learn a little bit more about that. I don't know, you guys have anything else to say about that? It was a great day.
It was really exciting.
Yeah.
Being a leader to their colleagues, um, whatever that might mean in this district. So it was, it was exciting.
So, just information, something we're trying this year and uh, I'll, I'll share more updates since that goes on. We have about four or five meetings over the course of the year.
Yeah, right, yeah. Just doing some learning and doing reflecting. People had lots of questions. I think all of us have different experiences. So sharing the experiences. I think it's really you know, to full we want to help people grow. And I also think it's to our benefit uh, for principals are out of the building. We have mandatory trainings places and so it also can provide opportunities for people to have some experiences while also supporting buildings who are um, whose principals gave you activities for hired, et cetera. So I think it is really a positive. It's really exciting. It was a fun morning and uh right, so hopefully it will benefit both parties. Our district will benefit and people will benefit individually too.
That's awesome.
That's all I got.
Awesome. Thank you. Next of the board committee reports. First up, teaching and learning, Mr. Nick Schumacher.
All right, no action items, no discussion items, information or items. Jennifer Willoughby, Director of Early Childhood Family Engagement, Indigenous Peoples' Day and Native American Heritage Month. Welcome.
Hey, thank you. So I have um, a few mentions that I shared.
Sorry. Basketball. Basketball practice.
But I want to share with you, so Indigenous Peoples' Day was October, October fourteenth. Um, this is just an example of what I shared out with um, instructional staff leading up to that day. So you can just kind of scroll through, Casey. Um, some information about Indigenous Peoples' Day, how to, how to talk about it in relation to Columbus Day. Um, there's some articles to read. Um, I shared our land acknowledgement, um, shared some stories and some legends that they could share with their classrooms. Um, and I heard a lot of really great feedback. Um, I was at the high school just the other day for conferences for my own child and um, talked in, when I was talking to the social studies teacher, he told me he used some of the resources. So that was great to hear. Um, I have the opportunity to go visit uh, Mr. Prisak. He is a student teacher in our district. Um, and he shared, it'll be on the next link, Casey. Um, it's actually him featured on the, on the flyer, but um, on our website, we shared pictures and video. David Coy went out to his classroom. Um, and uh, yep, there he is. He um, came dressed in regalia that day and shared um, some dances with the students and the students were awesome. They, I popped in the classroom to observe a little bit and they, I caught the tail end of one lesson and the beginning of the next um, and both class periods that I observed, the students were super engaged and very willing to step out of their comfort zone um, and try some of these dances. So that was really, it was really powerful. It was a cool experience. Um. So that, that was kind of our Indigenous Peoples' Day celebration throughout the district. Um, it was, it was really fun to hear. I actually heard kindergarten teachers were sharing stories from the um, the document I shared too. So it was great. K through twelve, lots of kids had experiences with that. Um, this month coming up, November, is Native American Heritage Month. And so I did something very similar. This one is much longer, so you I'll have you stop there for just a second though. Um, this one is much longer with a lot of, a lot more resources. Um, I shared with the teachers, you know, use it throughout the month, use it throughout the year, use it anytime. Um, I also shared that I'm happy to help them find additional resources if they're looking for something that uh, wasn't available in something I've already shared. Um. We have quite a few things coming up, our um, APAC, our American Advisory or, or American Indian Education Parent Advisory Committee. Um, we are planning a Native Spirit Week, the eleventh through the fifteenth, district-wide. Uh, we're asking everyone to um, to dress up that week throughout the week to celebrate uh, Native Pride. So Monday, we're um, we're asking people to dress in the colors of the medicine wheel and we have native, um, or we have Indigenous Ally stickers that we'll be passing out at the high school to students. Um, and Tuesday, uh, we're dressing in orange to um, honor and recognize uh, students who were impacted by the residential boarding schools. So every child matters is the theme for that. Um. Wednesday is wearing red for MMIW, Missing Murdered Indigenous Women. Um, and we have some buttons and things to pass out at the high school for that. Uh, Thursday is Dress Your Best, so we're asking people to come dressed in whatever they feel comfortable in, uh, whether it's their beadwork or regalia or um, ribbon skirts or just dressing up in whatever makes them feel most comfortable. Um, that night, we have a, a fry bread family night happening at the middle school. So that's Thursday, November fourteenth from five to seven. Um, we have uh, one of our our APAC members is coming to make fry bread and share with everybody her recipe and how she does that and do a demonstration. Um, and we have books to give away that night. Um, we are, we're planning a meal, um, and some drumming and we are, we're planning a meal, um, and some drumming and possibly some dancing and other activities. So that's happening that night. And then Friday, the fifteenth, we'll end the week with Rock Your Moms. So wear your moccasins, um, or whatever shoes, whatever footwear you need to happy. Um, and we'll have the students, uh, talk a little bit about that during lunchtime at the high school. And Troy House will be at the high school that afternoon, uh, during the lunch periods, doing some drumming demonstration as well. Um, so that's kind of our big week in the middle of, um, November and what's happening with that. So, yeah, thank you for stopping there. So you can kind of scroll through for the rest of what I shared. Um, we have, uh, a new family engagement coordinator who will be working specifically with our indigenous families. So I'm super excited to have her on board, Rebecca Sherf. Uh, I just met with her today. So I think it's official. Official? Too late, I'm sure, I mean, um, she is, uh, she's joining us and she's super excited to get started. She will be, um, around that week a lot at all the different activities and events and things that are going on. Um, so I hope you get to meet her.
Can I just speak to that? That's a position we've had posted for quite a long, long time that we've struggled to fill. Um, we're required to, um, have components of family engagement in our title grant and in our title budget. So we'll be using our title funds to be able to support that position along with the other family engagement coordinator positions that we have. So that's my question.
So she'll work collaboratively, collaboratively with all of the other family engagement coordinators as well as with our AIPAC, their Indian education support. Um, and then we have, what else do we have? Um, also this month, Troy House, who, um, is our drumming instructor and is going to be at the high school on the fifteenth, he wanted to, he's been wanting to for a while, get a drumming circle going. So I'm very excited. We're, we've pushed this out. Um, it's official. Hopefully now we get students who are interested and sign up. Uh, he'll be doing a demonstration on the fifth and the seventh at the middle school, um, from four to six and then starting lessons with students on the twelfth. Um, we, uh, I've worked with Pat, we're going to have a bus available to pick up students from elementary schools who want to participate. Uh, they'll get there a little bit after four. It'll be about four twenty by the time they get there. Um, but we'll get them over there if they're interested in doing that and transportation's a challenge. There's already a bus that comes from the high school to the middle school. So students who aren't yet driving can hop on that bus and get over there. We'll provide meal. Um, he's been giving pizza. So we'll have pizza for the kids and then they'll get busy drumming and learn about that. So we're very excited. That's being pushed out this month as well.
Is it just for the month, those lessons or is it kind of ongoing or?
Need to continue throughout the year. It would be every Tuesday and Thursday. So it's kind of a big commitment, but we're going to see um, what the kids can do and, and who is interested and what the level of interest there is. We'll extend it if we can. So.
When I was a principal, we did that in my school and I have great participation and our kids would perform in front of their co- their peers, uh, later in the year. So it can be a pretty
And that's the goal is that, is that we'd be able to offer that for our students too. Um, and then the last thing is, uh, I talked a little bit about this before too. Um, we are continuing our endeavor in collecting as many five oh six and, uh, now J O M forms as we can. Um, the five oh six forms are directly linked to our Title VI funding that we received to support, um, Indian education programming. Our, the J O M, we have not, um, tapped into those funds in a few years, but we, um, the eligibility to collect those funds has changed. And so now it's broadened a little bit. Um, more students are going to be eligible for J O M funding. Uh, it'll be much more similar to Title VI funding as far as the eligibility is concerned. Um, and so we are, we're anticipating, we're, um, we're really hoping to be able to put in for J O M funding for next year. So we're in the process of contacting our families and really getting the word out to fill out the J O M forms as well. So we'll get those on file. So, um, so that we can put in for that funding next year as well.
Make sure you hit a board member Schumacher there.
Yep, we got.
There you go.
Um, so that's, that's what I have.
That's a lot of questions. Thank you.
The, the first slides you went through, are you able to afford those?
Sure. I'd be happy to.
The ones that we sent out to staff.
I don't know, with whoever the first one is that she went off.
To a staff, Indigenous Peoples' Day and then also the Native American Heritage. So.
Just send them both.
Yeah. No other questions. Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. That's it. Alrighty. Next, Budget Insurance Committee. Mr. Nick Olson.
I have one action item, gifts, grants and bequests. Administration recommends approval to accept gifts, grants and bequests received in October of twenty twenty-four.
Motion to approve.
Aye. Motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Just want to say thank you to everybody on that sheet. It's, uh, very much appreciated. Uh, hearing no more discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. I have no discussion items. And David, you're on tap for our informational item. Once again, any big news in these two items?
Well, it's just using the see that we have a lot more experiences we do around it. So, and not to do this, but on the next agenda, it would be another, um, resolution for people to apply credit because they have to do that every
Six months.
Um, once a year, but we do it quicker because we did it at the end of last year. So do it here in November. And then I want to do it again in July, but that's going to require you guys a preliminary budget in May. So.
Which is what I would prefer.
Yes.
Yeah.
You know, a lot of budget.
So do you get nervous every week leading up to your next big influx of cash or? Hey, what, what we thinking about you? Uh, that concludes my report, Mr. President.
All right. Thank you. Personnel Negotiations Committee. Brooke Taylor.
I have one action item. Uh, administration recommends approval of the November twenty twenty-four new hires and separations report.
Motion approved. Okay.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? I like seeing a smaller list.
Who's Molly's?
Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. I have no discussion items and one informational item. The U.S. Department of Labor finalized a rule on April twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, setting the standard salary level for the white collar exemptions under the F L S A at eight hundred and forty-four dollars per week as of July first, twenty twenty-four, up from the current six hundred and eighty-four dollars per week. The weekly salary requirement for white collar exempt employees will then increase to one thousand, one hundred and twenty-eight dollars per week on January first, twenty twenty-five. We will have a better idea if the January twenty twenty-five increase will stand after the November presidential election. If the January twenty twenty-five increase is to move forward, it would affect some of our employees in the salaried professional group. And we will have to determine if they are moved to an hourly status or if we will increase the salary schedules. If there are changes, it will be on the December board agenda as it would be a change to the employee handbook. And that ends my report, Mr. President.
Well, thank you very much.
Molly, did you want to add anything about that?
I guess I want to add it on there just in case you have to bring it forward in December. I mean, the timing of it is not going to be good either way, whether it passes or not.
Sure.
And again, just to remind everybody, it's, it's the federal Department of Labor law change. It's not anything to do with us, you know, to make the change. So Kyle and I are going to work in November. Once we know what the steps need to be and then we'll bring it forward in December. We have to, you guys for approval.
All right. Thank you. Finally, Policies and Rules Committee. Mr. Ed Gallagher.
I got four action items. Administration proposes approval of changes to the following policies based on the old recommendations in order to be in compliance with the state and federal law updates. I mean, one of the first reading of policy five, seven, seven, one, search and seizure.
I'd like to recommend that this be tabled at this time for further discussion with administration.
I'd second that.
Should we, should we say why?
Yep.
Yes. Please tell us. Please tell us why. That can be said.
Let me share.
Okay, sure.
So the reason we're tabling the search and seizure or want to, should everybody agree? Um, part of the new sections in the, in the highlighted green there talk about searching of a student's person and intimate belongings and and basically, um, authorizing administrat- school administration to search, uh, students. Um, and talking about with Amy, uh, in this during the week here. Uh, my question whether administration has, um, I guess proper policies or standards on searching of students, um, who does it?
Training, right.
Where they do it at, what the training is. Um, is it recorded? Is it not? Do we use an S R O? You know, all those questions in regards to searching a student. Um, so we thought it'd be best to table that, get those answers and see what the training and stuff is for.
Say, I just started the conversation with Mr. Fezzi yesterday and this is not something that we do anyway. I mean, this isn't something we, we do. So I think we even need to revisit whether we it gives us authority to do it, but we don't necessarily do it. But I, I will find out more information about how we use SROs, what training we would do if we do utilize this, um, and bring that back probably for December.
And because it came from Niola, I'd like to know what other districts are doing.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, are other districts admins trained in doing this and?
Yeah, I guess.
Is that okay?
It won't. I'll, I'll do my investigation first. Yeah.
Yes.
All right. Well, I'll second the motion to table policy five, seven, seven, one, search and seizure.
All right. So that was the reasoning for wanting to table, um, any other discussion on that? Or any more clarification needed? Hearing none, all those in favor to table policy five, seven, seven, one. Uh, same five by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Take carries to table it. Next one is the first reading of policy seven, five, four, zero point zero five, assistive technology and services. This policy is updated to address new technology being used with certain students as a way to communicate with them and to monitor their location and behavior. Uh, it may be angel sense. In motion in a second.
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. Any discussion on this?
Anything you want to add? Yeah. I've asked Dana to kind of take a look at this too.
I don't think so.
Okay. All right.
Any other discussion on this policy? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Yeah, passes. Next one is the first reading of policy twenty-one, thirty-one, educational outcome, goals and expectations. This policy is updated to include the additional language added by twenty twenty-three Wisconsin Act two, six, six, which amends Wisconsin statute one eighteen oh one sub two, sub C eight to include reference to among Americans and Asian Americans.
Motion to approve. Second.
Again. Um, any discussion? So my discussion is for these.
Yeah.
Going to page, uh, two. I'm starting with the letter E as in Ed. It says in there, Article one, section twenty-two of the constitution, uh, we, I'd like to, and some of our members would like to amend that to say the Wisconsin constitution. So it's not confused with the U.S. Constitution. So people know where to find um, that particular article and section. And to continue under the same kind of topic here, letters F and G both reference chapter nine sixty-one. Most people don't know what chapter nine sixty-one unless you put Wisconsin state statutes before that. So they can actually find it. Um, so I'd like to amend this policy to show Wisconsin statutes, chapter nine sixty-one and the Wisconsin constitution in the, uh, E.
Second to approve amendments to policy five, seven, four, zero, oops, sorry, two, one, three, one.
Second to amend the policy.
Yep.
Um, any other discussion on this policy or the amendments to it? Hearing no discussion. All those in favor to approve the policy with the amendments? I'll say five by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Are you, since whoever's changing it clear out those?
Well, Anne's not here, so I'm sort of like typing this right now so that she knows to do this file.
Big contact at yeah, letter E.
Okay. Say the state, the statutes correctly. Yep. So I'm capturing this for her right now. Maybe tell me with that too, Casey. That's true. She can watch videos.
And moving on, one more action item is this committee, this committee recommends the approval of resolution twenty-four dash five. It's the requirement of nomination papers for school board positions.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion seconds. Uh, any discussion on that? Hearing no discussion, all those in favor, same five by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? If passes, have no discussion or informational items. That is it.
Okay. So as we get closer and closer to twenty-five and as we've adopted our new strategic plan, like to remind everybody as much as you can and perhaps in all print from the district about our mission, ensuring a superior learning experience, empowering every student for life and of our vision to become the leading district where education and community come together for student excellence. And I hope someday just to be able to say that verbatim without having to read it, but with all the hard work that was done and stuff, I, I, I just think Amy, I know where you want this district to go and, uh, I, I think a lot of things have been captured in this last strategic planning meeting. Our next meeting is Monday, November fourth, uh, right now at five P M. Um, make sure and get out and vote, exercise your right to. Thank you very much for being here this evening.
Motion to adjourn.
Yep. Is there a motion to adjourn? All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. All right, we've got.